Commission meeting, June twentieth, twenty twenty-three, with, uh, start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Item number three on the agenda is an invitation for citizens to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. There's a five-minute time limit per person. Anyone wanting to speak during this agenda item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. No commission action will be taken during the agenda item. Any requested action item may be scheduled for a future meeting date. We have two individuals that would like to speak today. I'd like to start with, uh, Mr. Wyble. Would you please come forward and introduce yourself?
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to, uh, speak before you. Uh, this one is actually informative and pretty easy. Uh, first off, I'd like to also point out that I am now an elected or selected official. I'm now a city council member for the city of Elkton, so I've taken the same oath, uh, to the U.S. Constitution and the state of South Dakota, uh, constitution as you have, so we have that equivalency. One of the things I'd like to, uh, bring to your attention that I'm proud that the county is doing is they have an open meeting coming up on June twenty-six regarding the budget hearings, uh, from eight to five P.M. in the community room. And one of the recommendations that I'd like to bring to your attention is that I am recommending, uh, of course, isn't regarding elections, is that you purchase the election, uh, software by E S and S to where you can actually get the results portion of that software. It's about eighty-six hundred dollars according to the public records of Brown, Lincoln, Minnehaha, and Pennington County is the cost of that software. What that allows you to do is to actually look at, uh, the accuracy of the election. And it's important because when we look at the manual itself from E S and S, it actually has a warning to the election officials that folds across the timing marks and also the ovals can be misinterpreted. And we actually don't know that if we're not reviewing the cast vote records and the ballot images that the machines already take as you insert the ballots in. And so this is why that reporting software is so important, so that you can review the accuracy, but also during the primary setup of the machine as you're testing it. And you test folds, you can make sure that you're leaving enough gaps to actually make sure that it's not an issue. What's interesting is that Dodge County, Wisconsin, has the software, and we noticed that they weren't quite reviewing it. And we actually have, uh, their cast vote records are available online along with the ballot images. And we actually have their ballot image along with the cast vote record of that particular ballot. And what's interesting is that we know that this is an absentee ballot. And we also see that there was a fold mark that went through an oval and actually disenfranchised a voter on their vote. The machine misinterpreted this line going through the writing candidate and basically considered an overvote even though that the person clearly voted for Tim Michaels for, uh, the governor race. And so based upon its cast vote record here, it is counted as an overvote. And therefore, that vote for that voter in that race did not count. We wouldn't know that unless we actually reviewed the cast vote records. Can this have an impact on elections? Yes. South Dakota has a lot of elections throughout the state that are actually close, and it's important. But the other thing is, the other reason that this is so important for us is because we also have to speak the truth to voters. Please don't use Sharpies. It's actually a thing. They bleed through. It bleeds through the ballots and can actually cause unintended consequences and miss votes on the other side of the ballot. And so without this type of evidence, we can't educate voters that also, when you make a mistake, please come up and get another ballot because voter intent is not ascertained when we put them into the machines. For example, this voter selected Tim Michaels, but then also wrote in Tim Michaels. And in this ballot, the vote was completely disregarded. So when I say we don't know what we don't know, I mean it. And so it's better to get the software so that we can actually help our election officials, help the voters make informed decisions, and also help our election officials make sure, now that we have a new contract with E S and S, to basically design our ballots to make sure that we're holding them accountable, that we're not having any ovals in an area where a fold could come across an absentee ballot. Thank you so much.
Next, Jeanette Gibbons.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
And, uh, I'll just make a, a brief comment regarding election-related topics. I asked a question last night about the counties in South Dakota that have decided to take a second look before they go ahead with their E S and S contracts. So the counties right now that are still saying this is a question whether we should go ahead and continue using these machines are Minnehaha, Lincoln, Moody, and McPherson. So those four counties have decided, hold up, let's take a closer look. And then in Han County, the county state's attorney has said, mm, I need to take a closer look at this contract. So something there caught his, his or her eye. So that's all I'm going to say about election-related materials. I've voiced several of my concerns in the past. I guess I will continue to ask for an agenda item that we open up discussion within this group and inviting the public to talk about ways that we can make our elections more secure. Just across the board, what are things that we can do to have more secure elections? So I'll continue to make that request. So what I'm going to turn my attention to is the upcoming movie, and I sent an email to all of you. A movie called Sound of Freedom. I brought the visual. And if you know places where I can put up this poster, please let me know. Sound of Freedom is a documentary about children who are abducted, missing, and marketed. Children are not for sale, not in this country, not in any country around the world, I would hope. So why is it a big deal? The sale of children is quickly becoming the number-one cash crop. It will overtake drugs if we continue on the trajectory that we're on. So somebody in the documentary excerpt that I saw said, well, drugs, drugs I can only sell once. A child I can sell up to five times a day. We know exactly what they mean by that statement. So yes, it is a problem. I look at things right here in South Dakota. Last night I was doing a quick search on U.S. Marshals and the work that they've done in this area of, of missing children. So I did come across information that relates to across the country. But let me just start with South Dakota. I go out to the Missing Persons site, which is part of our A.G. website. And currently, in the month of June, through June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, at ten eleven P.M. last night, in this month alone, we have thirty-seven missing people. And where are the news reports? Of those thirty-seven missing people, four of them are adults over the age of twenty-one and well over the age of, well, twenty-three, thirty-eight, forty-four, I mean, adults. The rest of them are under eighteen. Where are they? Where do they go? And more, another point of concern there is that many disproportionately large percentage of those people are the native. The Native Americans are definitely targeted and are definitely at a greater threat of this type of activity. And that should concern all of us. So then I started looking at the U.S. Marshal Service and the work that they've done, and I just pulled up reports. They do a fact sheet of the Missing Child Program. So I started in twenty twenty. Beginning in two thousand and five, the Marshals have helped recover over one thousand five hundred and seven missing children. In twenty-one, that number grew to sixteen hundred, more than sixteen hundred children that they've helped recover. In twenty twenty-two, more than twenty-three hundred missing children. And the report for twenty twenty-three, which is for the year twenty twenty-two, that number has grown to two thousand seven hundred and forty missing children that have been recovered through the U.S. Marshal Services assistance. So then I just quick took a look. I mean, I've heard these different operation names, just to kind of let this sink in. Um, they have operation names when they go into a district or a region of the country to look for these children in a particular state, in a region of the country. So here's some of the names of their operations. Operation This Is The Way Home, Operation We Will Find You, Operation Not Forgotten, Operation Summer Nights, nights as in chivalry, Operation Homecoming, Operation Autumn Hope, Operation Safety Net, Operation Find Our Children, and Operation Lost and Found. Now, that's not an exhaustive list of all their operations, but the names of those operations hit home for me. We're talking about somebody's child missing, and they have helped recover since this program started in twenty fifteen, over two thousand seven hundred and forty children in our country. Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, the movie starts July third. Hopefully, um, it's scheduled now for one week, but maybe it'll extend longer because I think the interest will be there. Thank you.
Item number four on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Motion second. Any comments, additions, or corrections? Hearing none. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Both same sign. Motion carried. Item number five, recognition of an employee's anniversary. We have one. Uh, Devlin Rue, would you please come forward?
All right. And certi- certificate of appreciation is presented to Devlin Rue, Devlin Rue, on this twentieth day of June, two thousand and twenty-three, by the Brookings County Commission in recognition of five years of dedicated exceptional service to the Brookings County Sheriff's Office. Thank you very much.
Item number six on the agenda is consent agenda items, uh, includes the minutes, travel education requests, personal action notices, cellular authorizations, humor services report. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any comments here? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Posler.
Aye.
Motion carries.
None. Item number seven is routine business, approval of the claims. Motion approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Posler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Be it noted items, uh, the BCOAC volunteer list listed for work comp purposes. Item A, um, letter A is Dick Hess. Item B is Carol Vavra. These are noted items. Moving on to item number C, department head reports, county development department.
Things on the, the report, and later on we'll be talking about, uh, the Derry Township project. The, the big thing the public needs to be aware of, our flood maps are being reviewed, and I sent some stuff to the county commission in the past on that. And, uh, we'll probably start having public meetings, hopefully, September, October timeframe. We're trying to co-locate with the city of Brookings to have one meeting and possibly another meeting in Volga so we can bring in the county, county citizens to see what's going on. And if we have to, we'll pull a third meeting, either in, in White or Elkton. But, uh, but, but the public has to realize is the flood maps are going to be updated by FEMA. If your property's not in the flood plain now and all of a sudden it comes into the flood plain, that, that can have consequences. So the, there isn't appeal period going on. We reviewed it at the county level, and I, I haven't been able to find anything large enough for us as a county to appeal. That doesn't mean there's not going to be individual properties out there that a landowner may want to appeal what, what they do. But when FEMA did these new maps, what they did is they did the, um, LiDAR where they, they flew over and they got all the elevations in the county. So now, instead of it being like the old maps where, well, actually our old flood maps, the original ones was based off nineteen sixty-nine flood, they went through and literally wherever it flooded, they, they drew a line on a map. So these new ones are all based off elevations. So it's pretty scientific. It's going to be hard to appeal something on this particular one, but the public needs to be aware of it. Because if they have a federal-backed mortgage and they fall within, within the flood plain, they will, will be required to get flood insurance. So, and while we're on flood insurance, a lot of Brookings County does not have flood insurance because they're not in the flood areas, but it always takes thirty days. If you do get flood insurance, it takes thirty days before it become effective. So if you want to get flood insurance, I'd get it before the rains come, because if, once it starts raining, it's a little too late. Any questions? I got another thing later, but thank you.
Mister, do you have any?
Good morning.
Morning. Morning.
I just have a quick update for you. Just kind of want to let you know things are going okay in the weed department. Last week was an amazing week to spray. Uh, we, we accomplished quite a bit, uh, spraying-wise. We're three-quarters done with the DOT. We're about half done with the county roads, and I would say a quarter done with the townships. With the wind, we have forecasted the rest of the week. We'll probably be digging out mowers. If there's patches of thistles out there, we'll go mow them and stay busy that way. Tomorrow is a leafy spurge bug collection in Cottington County. I just received this email yesterday. So it'll be a late on putting in a travel request, and it starts at one o'clock in Cottington County. There is another collection Thursday, the June twenty-second, um, in Sisseton or up by Sisseton. I can forward that information on UI space that off. I apologize. But we will go collect in Watertown. I do have a couple spots in Brookings, a couple landowners asking for some spurge bugs. So hopefully, I can bring at least one to two releases home for them. I don't have anything else. Just wanted to give a quick update.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Brian?
June thirteenth, I attended office personnel workshop in Pier. Uh, we got some updates from legislative audit. Uh, some of the bid laws have changed, uh, primarily just the materials went from twenty-five to fifty, but, uh, nothing's changed on the equipment side. Uh, we did get some updates from the DOT, uh, kind of some key notes that came out of that is, uh, all future big replacement grant projects. Uh, counties will be fronted seventy-five percent of the cost once the project is awarded and approved by the county commission and, and the South Dakota Department of Transportation. So that is kind of a major thing that we are going to have to take into consideration, uh, prior to you guys getting our budget here next week. So, uh, Stacy and, and, uh, Lori and myself and our staff are going to be meeting to discuss that. Uh, June fourteenth, uh, we had the contractor in, road guy, chip sealed County Road Eight. County Road Four last week, they're going to be back today, uh, to complete County Road Six. Also, on the fourteenth, we worked, or railroad crew from, uh, the railroad that, uh, goes through Volga and County Road Five or Smar Avenue in Volga was closed down, uh, for them to replace some crossing plank. Uh, the work took a little longer than anticipated, but, uh, we completed our asphalt patchwork on the fifteenth, and that work did require a flagger, so we had to have them present when we did that work. So that was opened back up by around eleven on, on, uh, Thursday. And, and fourteenth, uh, we also closed down, uh, the Country Club Bridge for reconstruction. And June fifteenth, the crew attended the safety picnic. Aside from that, I did give you guys a proposal, uh, here. I am going to be, I just wanted to have this in front of you guys for consideration primarily on, uh, I was hoping to have this on the, the actual meeting, but I didn't get it until Friday. Uh, one of the things I would like to have you guys look at and we'll discuss, um, but the building that was in Bruce was originally, uh, fifty-six foot deep. Uh, we're shooting for sixty-foot deep, and originally was forty-two feet wide, and we're shooting for fifty feet wide. And then we kind of got some other details laid out on the, uh, meeting minutes there. Um, but no decision can be made, but I am going to look for some other proposals on, on architecture just to kind of compare costs.
Brian, is there a reason that we're looking at a architect for this and not just doing bids and, and doing that?
Well, my worry is, is that we're going to end up with a building that blows away again. And I want to ensure that whatever we construct is to the standard.
Believe Bob, when we're building a county shop, is our, um, do our people go out and inspect?
Yeah, so our building inspector would inspect any construction. We don't charge for the building permit for, for a county entity building.
Right, but it would be inspected by our inspectors. Keep that in mind, too.
Yep.
Another question for Bob. Do you know if this FEMA funding for this is, uh, has a requirement for an architectural design? Component or not?
No, the, the FEMA just states whatever the local, the local regulations are.
Local building codes?
Yep.
And any contractors that we would hire have to go by those codes and, and, and standards along with their design if they, if we just bid it, correct? I would think so.
The other question I have is if, would our insurance require us to have a engineered unit?
If memory serves me right, we just bid the Sinai shop, correct? That was before your time or right? Yeah. We didn't, we didn't hire an architect. We just had developed specs from probably a previous building and put that out for bid.
I mean, if that's the way we want to move forward, I, I can prepare.
Well, we'd want to make sure that you include whatever specifications you would like that would handle another duration that comes through. If it's hurricane tie-downs or
Yeah, and that is one of the
different footings and some other stuff that may need to be required. I'm not sure that
Yeah.
need to spend twenty-four thousand
And, and I do have that kind of outlined in the, uh, proposed building.
Right.
Uh, what we'd like to see is really not much different from what we had. But if we'd like to move forward with bidding, I can get biz prepared for you guys to consider at the next meeting.
I guess the direction I would take is probably do that.
Okay.
Get a list of exactly what you want and, and everything in the bid, and then, yeah.
This is a good start. Right.
If we're not happy with the bid process, we can, we can obviously reject all biz and re-bid again. But, uh, I think right now, just getting somebody to bid this is going to be a challenge, so.
I do have some interested parties, so. Okay. That's all. Move forward. Thank you.
Morning.
Morning.
Jail update. Uh, we have, um, thirty-five inmates at the present time. Uh, the U.S. Marshal Service is, uh, starting to bring us some inmates. They'll be bringing, uh, some more, up to ten, that we're going to hold, uh, for now, see how that goes. Volga had their, uh, their, uh, weekend with, um, uh, and street dance and, and, uh, everything went well. No, no issues. Firemen are pretty good over at Volga. Actually, the firemen in all the, all the towns kind of take care of their own issues unless something gets really out of hand. But, uh, everything went, went good, so lots of people, um, running around with, uh, rummage sales and things, but no issues. One of the things that, uh, I, last week was the, I, I'd never had so many complaints in a week's time. It started on Monday and it just kept going. There's just traffic complaints, detours, uh, gravel roads that they're not used to traffic. And everybody wanted a deputy by their driveway, you know, at eight o'clock in the morning or between seven and eight. And my guys are trying to handle the complaints as we come. Um, Brian helped me. Uh, Lake Campbell's experiencing more traffic. Well, first of all, it's summertime, and, uh, on the south side, you got more camp spots. I think they put twenty more camp spots in, and with cattails enough, so there's a lot of traffic. Then with the detour, it's, they're coming in on, on the south side. And, uh, the speed limit goes from fifty-five right into a twenty-five, so they don't have a chance to really slow down and they get on into the cabin area. And, um, visiting with Brian, and actually, they have a, and Brian can explain it more if you need to know. But, uh, actually, in that particular area by the sportsman But actually in that particular area by the Sportsman Club, actually Moody County takes care of that signage. And so I called the Moody County Highway Superintendent and he put signs up right away, like the next day. It's got twenty-five, you know, ahead twenty-five miles an hour, so it's, so hopefully they'll start slowing down. Also, the Highway Patrol has a new motorcycle officer, Justin Page. He's been working that area too. So actually that's, that's helped us out, so I'm grateful for that. Other places, it's just they're not used to traffic and we just do the best we can to try to minimize and patrol. The other thing that we're getting bombarded about is nine-one-one hangup calls. It used to be that if Central Dispatch Communications gets a nine-one-one call, if they, if they thought that nothing was going on, they get, they call the person back. It sounds like nobody's in distress. They didn't dispatch a deputy or a city policeman. Well, now the policy's changed that every nine-one-one call is that if they hang up or whatever, they give it to either a city policeman or a deputy sheriff. And as I call around to the other agencies, Cottington County and DUAL, this is kind of the procedure. And they're kind of handling it the same way we are. If dispatch calls them back and it sounds like everything's okay, the deputy doesn't go. They also check their log to make sure if there's been any recent calls there. For instance, over the weekend, got a nine-one-one hangup call in the Elkton area. We've been there before, so the deputy went and it ended up being a domestic. So it's, it's kind of one of those things that the deputies have to use good judgment if they're going to go check it out or whatever. A lot of times, you know, it just come on, you know, it's just pinging off a tower in a certain area. And most of them are pocket dials, those types of things. So we did some press on it with Facebook and stuff, so, but that's just getting to be, so far, and I, and I did put those stats in there now so you guys can see that. It's on the last page. So far this month, we've had sixty-four hangup calls. Last month, a hundred and eight. Between the two city, between the city police and us, we've had two thousand two hundred and ten missed dials. That, that's, it's, it's kind of taxing on my guys, but it's just one of those things we got to do, but.
Marty, it's really easy to do on an iPhone.
Yeah.
You, you, the SOS thing shows up several times. I don't know. I've done it where I, oh, I see the SOS and I'm trying to not call it. I end up calling it and I hang up on it and I get a call back sometimes.
Yeah.
Did you, did you mean to call? No, I didn't. Thank you. I'm sorry. These things are causing more of your SOS calls on iPhones than anything else out there. I don't know how you stop that. I really don't.
Yeah, I don't know. I hope we can get some technology somehow. But what's happening is that, and I, and it's easy to do. You think you don't connect. You know, you think you got it quick enough, but it's just, man, it's right there. And a lot of times they don't want to answer back, you know? And our main thing is that if you do make a mistake and dial the nine-one-one, just stay on the, stay on the line and talk to dispatch. And say, hey, you know, it's a pocket dial or whatever, you know, as long as, you know, and again, a deputy may come and check yet.
Well, like I said, I was fast enough that I hung up before it answered and got my call back. I thought, ha, I hung up.
It's, it's a split second. I mean, it's not even a split second.
I mean, it's a great feature to have on the phones for safety. I don't want to disable it on all iPhones. I just want people to know that, as you said, stay on there and tell the dispatch answers the tough. I'm sorry, missed dial.
It puts, it puts a lot of pressure on my staff and the city police too. You know, we don't want to not go to a nine-one-one call and they are in distress or something like that. But we, we're just doing the best we can, but we are getting bombarded by, by that type of.
Well, on your radio show you got coming up, I assume you still do those once in a while? Go ahead and mention that whole process to people. I think maybe a public education procedure might be in order here on.
The big thing is just to.
Nine-one-one.
Yeah, yeah. No, you're right. You're right.
Stay on the phone and tell them you made a mistake. Probably do some public relations on that if you could.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Other than that, just like I said, we're just busy with the detour stuff and that type of things. Other than that, unless you got something.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Finance officer report. We have documents, be it noted items. Additive totals, registered deed statement and fees collected. We do have action approved second quarter general fund transfers as per budget appropriations documents. A, four hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty cents to Highway, Road and Bridge Fund. And item B is forty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty cents to Emergency Management Fund. We have motion approved.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion a second. Any discussion? Any none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Schedule agenda items, we have none. We move on to item number nine, regular business. Item A is action approved resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-one. A plot of lots one and two of Stime Edition in the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter of Section Nine, Township one oh nine north, range fifty-two west of the fifth prime meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Do I have a motion approved?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion a second. Comments?
This was, all four plots were heard at our June sixth regularly scheduled county planning commission meeting and all of them passed in unanimously and sent to this board with a request that you approve them.
Any none? Call a roll please.
Johnson?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, action approved resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-two. A plot of lot one of Peterson Edition in the southeast quarter of Section Five, Township one ten north, range forty-nine west of the fifth prime meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Have motion approved.
Motion approved.
Motion a second. Any additional comments? Any none? Call a roll please.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, action approved resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-three. A plot of lot one in block two of Goodfellow Acres Edition in parcel four of the plot of government lot one and in the government lot six in the west half, the northeast quarter and the west half of the east half of the northeast quarter of all in sections thirty-one. Township one twelve north, range fifty-one west of the fifth prime meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Do I have motion approved?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion a second. Any comments on this one? Any none? Call a roll please.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D, action approved resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-four. A plot of lots two C and four C, block two, Sunset Point Edition in government lots three and four of Section Twenty-two. Township one twelve north, range forty-seven west of the fifth principal meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Do I have motion approved?
Motion approved.
Second.
Do I have motion a second? Any comments? Any none? Call a roll call.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Action approved abatement number twenty-three dash fourteen. An abatement application made by the City of White for parcel number thirty-seven, twenty-seven, five dash zero zero one, zero zero dash zero one nine dash zero zero in the amount of twenty-two dollars and fifty-five cents. Do I have motion approved?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion a second. Any comments? I guess this is pretty self-explanatory. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item F, action approved agreement number twenty-three dash forty. A Brookings County Detention Center inmate housing contract between Brookings County and Lake County. Do I have a motion approved?
Motion approved.
Motion a second. Comments? Any none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item G, an action to automatically supplement for unanticipated expenses incurred and reimbursement made to the Brookings County for the PPCC slash POD Committee Department of Health Grant reimbursement in the amount of three thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-five cents. Receipt number zero zero six four, five, two, two, four, two. General ledger line two, two, six, dash, four, dash, two, 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 dash, four, two, nine, four. Do I have motion approved?
Move approval.
Second.
Do I have motion a second? Any comments?
This was basically a reimbursement of funds that Brookings County expended for the PPCC POD Committee and it was reimbursed by the state of South Dakota to us.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item H, discussion and possible action to approve the cost estimate for consideration of the reconstruction of the Big Sioux River diversion structure. Do I have motion approved?
Move to approve.
Second.
Do I have a motion a second? Comments?
What I did is I, I got this quote and I had, it basically broke it down. One was to have an NRCS meeting, coordination meeting, which I went ahead and approved on my own. But I, on the public input meeting, I wanted to touch base with the county commission and get your feedback. They gave us a quote on it and we do probably have the meeting after the, we'll, we'll schedule it for just about when the crops are coming back in. We need to get done with the NRCS and get their, get their feedback. And then we want to wait till the crops are come, are basically in and then have a public meeting. Probably down at the BCOAC, although that would be subject to availability. And then I do believe the money's in the budget for twenty twenty-three, as long as we can have it by the end of the year.
And this will be late this fall then, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir. And of course, this meeting, we, people, landowners know what's going on in the area. I mean, everyone knows, we've had people out there looking at stuff. This will allow everyone in the area, in the whole county, to understand what's going on.
Could you review the cost estimate?
Yeah, the, the cost estimate for, it's, they're estimating eighty-eight hours for the public input meeting and that's various, various individuals. They've got a project manager, they've got a hydrology expert, two environmental scientists, a biologist, GIS analysis, and then a graphic specialist. The total quotes, twelve thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars. So right at thirteen thousand dollars. And that would be, that would actually, should include both the NRCS coordination meeting, which we're already in the process of doing, public input meeting, and then they would give us a in writing. And this should, should be enough information at that time. Later this year, hopefully we can, we can get a decision one way or the other and get this, get this off of the center, center balance.
So Bob, you feel like we have to do this step next and pay for it in order to make an educated decision on a go, no go?
I really do. I mean, we, public input is very important in the world of zoning, planning and zoning, and especially drainage. Drainage is such a hot topic that, I mean, there's, there's pluses and minuses to this particular thing. And I feel we need, we may not have heard from all the public that we need to, and this is one way of doing that.
That's been kind of an issue with this project all along. It's pros and cons have been pretty much split, so.
Thousand dollar cost, I would probably put some ads in the Town and Country Shopper. Get a, get a pretty good sized ad in the Town and Country Shopper a couple of weeks before the meeting to let people know we're having it. But that, that's also covered in the budget already.
That's my exact thoughts and make sure that the landowners affected, probably get a personal invite.
By all means. And that's part of, that's part of the cost on their.
On their side.
On their side.
Okay. Questions, Bob? Call a roll please.
Johnson?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item I, action to approve changes in the Brookings County Personnel Manual effective July first, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion approved?
Move approval.
Second.
Do I have a motion a second? Comments?
The cellular allowances, that was actually approved earlier this year. So we're updating the manual to reflect the changes that were approved by the commission earlier this year. The other pieces of this really only affect the vacation and sick leave for elected officials.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item J, discussion and action to declare a conference room table as surplus property. Do I have motion approved?
Move to approve.
Second.
Do I have motion a second? Any comments?
Well, I guess the discussion I kind of thought would happen first, but that's fine. The conference room table that was in room two fifteen next to, between Bob and Sean's offices on second floor, we've replaced that. It was the, one of the ones that had the severe delamination. That was in budgeted replacement. As we were taking it apart, it doesn't come apart into chunks easy enough to move around. Let's just put it that way. The tabletop itself is one big piece. It doesn't fit in the elevator. We'd actually have to hire a moving company because even staff in-house don't have, we don't have the right equipment and enough manpower to move, move the different pieces of this table. So I guess I'm looking for some direction if we want to try to sell it. We would have to move it, we'd have to hire somebody to move it, probably move it down to the basement, but then we're going to have to hire somebody to move it back out of the basement. If somebody actually buys it or, or we just take it apart, dismantle it so it is no longer a functioning table and we just get rid of it. So I'm looking for direction from the board on what you would like to do. My thought is we're not going to get enough money out of it, selling it via the surplus auction to cover the costs of what it's going to take to move it. If we can basically cut it up into sections and get it out of there, then we can probably handle it in-house.
How about selling it as is, where is it? They got to move it. They probably wouldn't get anything for it that way either.
No, and it's.
The table's not the greatest table in the world. I would dismantle it and throw it away. What you would want?
Yeah, I mean, your motion right now is just to declare it as surplus property. But yeah, I would probably include how you want to, I would just say to dispose of it. I agree. I don't think that will cover the cost of selling it when we've got to pay somebody to move it and do all that, so. Would a friendly amendment be all right?
I'll just make an amendment to the motion that it be a disposal.
Second.
Do I have a motion a second? All in favor of the amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Back to the original motion. Any other questions for, to declare? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Conference table as surplus. Item K, discussion on Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness Submission of a CDBG Grant.
I guess I'll lead that discussion. The building committee has decided and the board has decided to apply for a CDBG Grant, Community Development Block Grant from the state. They have some funds that are not obligated yet and there is time to file. It's pretty quick. We have to have it all, everything done and in by the end of October, I believe it is, or the first of October, one of those two dates. There's a lot of, of work that needs to be done to get the application in. One of the things is need to decide who's going to sponsor the CDBG Grant. For instance, the city sponsored the one for, the food pantry for the one point six million. So they've been to the well with their grant request. request recently. It was suggested by First District that the county be the ones that supply the grant. There are some obligations to the county for doing that. Most of the work is gonna be done by First District and Behavioral Health, but there are some accounting processes that the county will have to follow up on. Most of it, when the project is done, there's a five-year look back. We just gotta keep records on it. The other part of it is, the way the CDBG grants work is, and I, you know, I've heard this twice, and I've heard it different both times. So, what, what actually happens is, is that we get the grant given to us. We then, Behavioral Health will start its construction. They will pay the bill, submit it to us for reimbursement, goes to First District to go through their system because they manage all the grants up there. Then that gets sent to peer. Peer then sends us a check. So, it's, it's kind of a roundtable thing, but that's the state's accounting program on how they handle CDBG grants, and I'm sure it was the same way for the city's grant for the, the food pantry too. So, the request is, at some point in time, we'll get more details. If you're interested in doing that, we would have to have a resolution that we would pass that say that we will, we'll make the grant application. First District will write that resolution. We'll make a decision on the amount of money that we will ask for. Minimum would be seven hundred and fifty thousand, we thought, with conversations with the state, would be a reasonable amount. They have not funded a building for Behavioral Health out of any of their CDBG grants, but it is eligible, and no one has made a request. First District is working on a couple of requests right now. They have some personnel changes, so it's, it's gonna be a little hectic to get this through. Their grants are working as Boys and Girls Club in Flandre and the Lake Northern Fire Department that burned down. So, they've got a couple in the, in the hopper already, so if we want to do this, we've already started with First District as far as getting all the information of all the things we need to do in order to get this grant. So, if there's any interest in us making sure that we want the resolution, then we need to do that, and we'll have the resolution for the next, next meeting.
You have consensus?
Consensus is fine. To get the resolution together, and we can vote on it at that point in time, so.
I think you got to go ahead.
All right. That's what we'll do. Thank you very much.
Item number ten, Commission Department Directors Report.
The VSO report is there for the month of May. I think I had mentioned before, Matt started May eighth. Due to that, they've kind of seen an increase with the number of veterans that have been, they've been able to help, so ninety-three appointments and veterans assisted. They've done seven different outreach events that are listed there, and six DAV rides. Two of those were actually through beta. Just to note, they're down to five certified drivers is all they have right now for the DAV van, so of course, also always welcoming applications for that. The surplus cash, cash information was included with, in my report. Forty, we're at forty-nine percent for May. That is above the ten-year average of about forty-two percent, so we're in good shape there. We'll continue to watch that. We received information from First District about the STIP review that's coming up Wednesday, June twenty-eighth at ten o'clock at their First District offices up in Watertown. Information there is included with my report. We also received this notice from Army Corps of Engineers about a public meeting. This is regarding the area, I believe, just east of the interstate where the city is. There's some talk of some additional commercial retail development out by the interstate. They're doing, placing some fill material in on that two point seven five acre area. That's next to a tributary of the, the Big Sioux, so that's kind of why this is, that, that's why the commission is getting this. So, that is, comments it says must be submitted by June twenty-seventh. If you have anything there, visit with me about that. I'd like to thank our employees. Last week was public sa, our safety week for our, for our employees. The drills, the trainings that we had here went well. The safety picnic, everybody got to their fire extinguisher training, so it was a good week, and we had nice weather to get that stuff done. Yesterday, I did give a presentation at the Lions Club meeting at noon, so I got to visit with those folks, which was, that was kind of a fun event to go visit with those folks and give them, just kind of share kind of just a general overview about the county and the different county departments and what we all do here, and some other things that we have going on. One other thing to note, there's a save the date from banner that we did receive, July twenty-seventh. It's down at Sioux Falls for their new, their new building, open house and ribbon cutting down there, four to six PM on July twenty-seventh. Other than that, just some of the upcoming dates. Budget hearings, a week from yesterday. Plan on being there all day. We'll order lunch in. We're working still on getting your books created. As soon as those are, we'll get everything into box first, and we'll let you know. Just doing some last-minute touches on things. We talked about the STIP review. Tuesday, July fourth, is the holiday where offices will be closed. We talked about the banner, open house. We did get notice of the Brookings Firefighters Dance on July twenty-ninth. Conservation District is now set for Wednesday, August ninth, so you can put that in permanent pen on your calendars. That's when that tour will take place. They usually have been going from the morning and trying to wrap up kind of early afternoon kind of thing, so. And then, again, looking a little further out, the CDI golf outing coming up. So, that's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Mission reports and discussion items. Mr. Vanderwall.
Thank you. I had two meetings since our last meeting. On the twelfth, on Monday, I had a meeting here at the City County Building, and then on the thirteenth, had another short meeting as well. Thank you.
Mr. Bartley.
On the twelfth, we had a Behavioral Health Board meeting where we reviewed the new building additions and what the cost, initial estimates of costs were from, from ID eight Architecture Engines Business, and made some suggestions to go back and do some redrawing and some things, so we'll see what those were. On the fourteenth, we did have a building committee meeting to look at some of those revisions and some of the interior design aspects of it. So, we're moving forward with that. That includes the CDBG grant. Fifteenth, went to the safety picnic. It was a great pork, pulled pork. It was different than the hamburger and the brat. I liked that. The sixteenth, BDC had a group of us meet with Dusty Johnson out at the Innovation Campus out there. It was about an hour-long meeting where we covered a lot of different issues with the city and with Brookings County and with School District and with the college representing from each. So, that was an interesting, interesting meeting with Dusty. And then, I guess that's what I did. Thank you.
Pretty slow, a couple of weeks, but last night, I did attend the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center Range Service Officers Appreciation Dinner. It was well-attended. Those guys put a lot of, a lot of time and, and sweat into out there, and it is appreciated by many. That's my report.
Okay. On the fifteenth, I attended the safety picnic, and last night, went to the OAC for the RSO appreciation night. Dustin does a great job out there. He had some numbers. They volunteered over thirty-eight hundred hours out there for, with their volunteers, so hats off to those guys, and they make the gun range and, and the facility what it is. It's a big thank you to those guys. That's all I have. Moving on. Item number thirteen, executive session. In accordance with South Dakota fight law, one dash twenty-five dash two, print seat one and three, personnel and consulting with legal counsel. Do we have a motion to enter?
So, pro, so motion.
Second.
Have a motion a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. And then the executive session. Thank you.